Right, it's quarter past six, so we'll start this meeting. I'd like to welcome the new councillors. I'm sorry, I was supposed to meet you last week and another story. So anyway, welcome on board and thank you so much for volunteering to stand for the town council. And hopefully I'll see some of you, all of you again. So first of all, I must say that this meeting has been recorded. It's been recorded by councillor Wilson in private capacity. It isn't an official recording. I say that because there is concern sometimes with recordings that any liability, which there won't be, but any liability would be with the council, which is not ours. So it's important that I say that. Right, the first item on the agenda is the election of mayor. Until this moment, I've been there, but I'm not going to pursue. So first, I have to ask if anybody's prepared to stand as mayor. Excellent. Any other volunteers? No. Okay. Can I have a proposal for Alan? Okay. You take your choice. You know us. And a second. Second. Excellent. So then we have to decide how we proceed with the vote. The room only has one candidate, so I... Shall we just have a vote by hands or through a secret? Right. Okay. So we'll have a vote. I do not take part in this vote. So can we have a vote? Those in favour of Alan being mayor? Excellent. That's unanimous. So I shall hand this over, Alan, and I shall wish you luck. So like the fourth to back of possible. Have you done them? Barry and I worked together for many years. We know how this is done. So. And good luck.
Are we back to front?
No.
We are.
Christine really knows how these get me any tips. She will be your official dresser. So anyways, that's your bag, but Amy, Christine, so I wish you good luck, Alan, and all the best. And good luck, everyone.
You have to stay here for a moment. We're all of us grateful to Karen. She's been our mayor for the last two, two years and served the town council very well. Led us through meetings very well. There'll be some of you in the room that won't be aware that Karen has done a huge amount of work on these fabulous red poppies that we see displayed in the village. Two year Remembrance Day, but I think it's as big as one outside the Peel Tower. It wasn't just the fact that Karen led that project, it was a community-based project. She had lots of people knitting those poppies and leading up to it all. And you did further work on the Remembrance Parade. It's very well organised and run now, and that's us down to you. You've done lots of other work that I could talk about at length. But I'm really wanting to acknowledge the fact that you've served us very well. We're very grateful. We wish you well.
Oh, thank you.
Alan, we have a little something just as a thank you from the council for you.
That's so good.
Round the applause.
That's something we expected, and really lovely, but he's now no longer the mayor's handbag carrier, but I think maybe the flower carrier, I don't know. So anyway, I wish you all well, and I shall see you around.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Enjoy this sunshine.
Can I show a quick picture of the flowers?
Do you know, supper is in the oven and a bottle of sparkling is in the fridge.
Brilliant, thank you.
Oh, that's...
Thanks very much.
Alan, let me touch you.
Thanks for all you've done. Right. First of all, very generous support, but it was very generous of you to support it in the way you do. Do we need to close up? All right. Goodbye, Pete. Yeah, yeah, sure. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. I've actually got some very brief personal details about me, which I think I owe it to you to tell you. I mean, I know some of the councillors that are more understanding know me a little bit. But if you would like me to, I'm very happy to try and say a little bit. There are four of you that know little or nothing about me, and I think you should know something. Okay.
Yeah.
Yes? Right. Well, I've lived in Pontealand for 28 years. This is my personal background. My wife Marion and I have just downsized to a bungalow in Long Meadows, just behind the Broadway shops. We can't find a better location, falling to Elbwater or the Co-op or wherever. So it's a very good move. I'm a family man. Marion's got three children from her first marriage, and I've got two from mine. So there's the five children and four grandchildren. Family are all over the place. Would you believe Chicago, Vienna, Cyprus, Spain, Medburne, and Fountains? So we've got a spread of things and very handy for holidays, if ever you need somewhere to go. I'm a keen amateur golfer and I'm a member of Pontealand Rugby Club. So that's a bit of a personal background. In terms of business background, for over 30 years, I worked in industrial relations. That was my forte when I was working. If you go back to the 70s, 80s and 90s, there were some quite big industrial relations issues around, even through the early 2000s I was, and that was my day job. Through working at that, I rose to the position of region director, a position I had for 10 years. And originally, I was looking after the North East, based here all the way through the earlier part of that career. But I was then asked to take on an area that was extended to the south of Sheffield, up to Berwick and across to Correa. I didn't do it all on my own. I had 80 staff working with me, lawyers, environmental experts and so on. We were providing a professional service to about 2,000 companies across the geography I've just described to you. Business turned over about eight million. And when I'd done enough damage working in that job, I retired in 2010. Did a bit of consultancy, but otherwise I'm not working at all now. Very importantly, I just want to say something about Pontealand Town Council. I regard Pontealand Town Council as a mid-ranking parish council. I always find it staggering that there are 147 parish or town councils in Northumberland. For a population of about 330,000, it's a staggering number of little authorities. You might want to know, may not know this, but you might want to know that Snitter, Rodham and Ewatt, at the time when I did my research for this, have got no town council at all. So the residents of Pontealand, our 12,000 residents here, have got a properly formed council with the 12 of us all trying to do our best for them. The main issue, as I see it, is providing local services, either services that are provided directly through the town council itself or by Cath and others working with the Dublin County Council. And it's those rolling services on year on year that's really the kernel of what we're trying to do as a town council. In terms of our town council, and this is based on my years as a councillor, I think it's a very well-run town council, parish council. We've got a very good staff team here with Cath and Bev and Ian. And very importantly, the finances of the council are very sound. From my point of view, what I want to do is work with all of you. Brand new in the job, never been a mayor in my life before. And so I want to, all of us, work together in the best way that we can, really try to help and support you. You hopefully try and help and support me. Said the main thing is to keep the services going, but if it comes to fresh ideas, different ways of doing things, I'm open to looking at that. Let's try and talk about it and see if there are things that we can improve and different things that may make the services for the people in Pontealand better. And the last thing is that we're all of us volunteers. Cath and Bev and Ian rightly paid their position, but we're otherwise volunteers. So let's have some fun. I can't wait to try and enjoy this, yeah?
Alan, I'd just like to suggest that we ask everybody to go around the table and give a very short resume, because we don't know anything about anybody either.
Fine. Yes.
So it's okay, start with me. I'm an architect in private practice. I work from office in Newcastle, I work passionately. This has all just gone in my bio that I've sent to Cath, so I can remember it. I've got a particular expertise with niche housing, conservation areas and listed buildings. As most of you know, I was vice chair of the Labourwood Land Steering Group about 12 years ago. So I've worked with the council before. I'm married, two adult children, collie dog. I've recently downsized from originally Drive to Eland Edge, so I've always been in the east ward and I'm absolutely passionate about protecting the unique rural and historic character of Pontealand and its setting in the green button. Next.
Everybody has to. Just quickly.
Well, I have lived in, well, I was a student when I got married at the age of 20, I think, during then, in 1969. And my husband was studied here, then working here as a junior. And I have, then we moved to Newcastle after six years, because I had family connections in here. I was very lonely in my legs, I wasn't very happy. And Newcastle was much, much better city in comparison. And I loved coming to Newcastle, but so we decided to move down. Then we went into closed business, that's what my brothers used to do. And my husband, he could not find his professional job with not having much interest in the North East. But he wasn't very happy. He said he has not spent that many years to spend under clothes. So we started looking for something different. And luckily, we found post office. And we were there for nearly 13 years, which was good. With that, we could give more time to three sons, we had. And most of our money went into the education, which when I think back was well worth spending. And so from, from the very beginning, I've been doing volunteering work in Birmingham when I came in. There's a lot of people who came from India, from small villages, who could not speak English. So I was helping them as an interpreter, free of charge, going anywhere. Anybody wanted phones filled in or going to interview. So I was quite enjoying that. And when I moved to Leamington, again, being in post office, I was guiding people what they could get and then if fit, who really deserved it. And then we had community centre in Leamington, and I did help there as well while I was working and supporting the local school there. And when we moved to Pontealand, that was nearly 30 years ago, then I started looking volunteering platforms there. And my first one was Pontealand Community Partnership. Then after that, I joined Pontealand Patients Group, we called it at that time, representing the patients and trying to get things changed in the surgery and running difficult. And then I joined the Health Walk when it came in. And as we retired, I had joined Conservative Party a long, long time ago. Then I got interested into coming into council. I thought I'd find some sort of platform to get better chances to help people. So four years ago, I had the chance and local people supported me and all these councillors as well at that time, because I had a bad injury to my leg. So I did not even went into open up the leaflet, so I was lucky to be amongst them. So since then, I've done my best, do the best of my ability, being in council as a councillor. And I have been on various committees and I'm still enjoying it. So I'm lucky to be back again. That's all.
Hi. Well, I've lived in Pontealand for about 26, 27 years now. I've been married a hell of a long time. My husband keeps saying if he committed murder, he would have come in out of it a long time ago. I've got three children, seven grandchildren, two great grandchildren, who I love to spend time with. Tuesday night is dinner night at Granny's, so they all come for Tuesday. It was one of my grandson's wishes, could he come and have a meal with me every week? And I said, no problem. But now it's gone from one person, the week before last, there was about 12. Anyway, before I retired, and I didn't retire until I was in my 60s, because I was a little going to work. And when we built the house in Pontealand, we'd only lived in it a month. When an architect knocked at my door and said, how did you get permission to build this? We're going to pull it down. And it's put down the shops and your house land is going to be car park. And I went, oh, okay. He came from Hexham, I can't remember his name. So I thought I would have to get involved a bit in Pontealand to see what was going on. So I joined Pontealand Community Partnership. I later became the treasurer for Ponteus and Pues for a many, many number of years. And then I wanted to be councillor because I think you can spend a lot of good time helping a lot of people. I look after Merton Hall, and I have done since 2012. This is my 30th year as a councillor. It has its challenges, because it's very difficult to keep everybody happy all of the time, even please some of the people some of the time. But when I went to work, I loved it. And unlike probably most of you around the table who get a bus to work, or you take a car, I supply to work every week. So it was a little bit different, considering I was terrified of flying. I overcame that. So that's virtually me in a nutshell.
Thank you. Thank you. I started in 89 on Great Britain Parish Council, and then got on to Tindale District Council in 91 with your father. And then progressed, eventually moved over here, we bought and sold farms, and I moved to Belsey. So a farmer, I've got another farm in Scotland. I used to do other jobs as well. And got on to the county council, as well as the district council, that was Castle Mortimer Borough Council. Got on the county council in 2001. So I've come with a fair bit of experience of what you can and can't achieve and how you achieve it, so on. Well, that's all.
I grew up on a farm in Allendale. So my farmer's daughter is taking my job in my life in eels and quads. And then I moved to Newcastle to do my A-levels and my degree, which is in education. Primary school children, however, it wasn't for me, so I went into like compliance education. And I'm married to Richie, who was in recruitment. And we were both made redundant during Covid, within 24 hours of each other, and had a mortgage and everything else. So Richie was like, right, the time is now to set up a business. So he set up the Harry James Group, and that's went from strength to strength. But then that left me at a loose end when it was all set up and going. But as Richard said, my dad's a county councillor, I've always wanted to be like him and go to meetings and be engrossed in the community. So this is where I'm at now. Thank you.
From a personal point of view, I've lived in Pontealand the majority of my life. I'm 43 years old now, so with the odd interlude, even on from the free air or gospel, Pontealand born and bred. I've had the privilege of attending the local schools as well. Used to attend the rich and noble's son Raman as well, two naughty boys in the same class. Also had the privilege of playing local sports teams, being part of the committees and captain of Pontealand Rugby Club, playing for the Blackbird Football Club for a number of years as well. Just up the road near Millstone, not far from the Hawk Club, which unfortunately seems to have closed down as of last night. So that used to be an easy walk across the back field. From a professional point of view, I worked primarily for my father since I was 18, in a number of roles for a large wealth management company called Positive Solutions, where I was their marketing director. And so we successfully sold that and helped found what's probably the UK's largest or most successful financial services group in the UK called True Potential about 17 years ago. It was about seven years ago, I was chief executive of there and helped exit the family shareholders from there about three years ago. Now, which has left me, I'm pleased to say, not at a loose end, because it's plenty busy, but as I've exited out of there, it's given me a lot more time to give back to the community, I think. I'm a trustee of the family's charity, where I do a lot of work there, and being given the opportunity to help. A place which I'm incredibly passionate about, which I love. And didn't know what Will was saying in terms of its unique character and its green button, how it looks as well. It feels, now's a great time to give something back and help.
Hi. So like Will, another architect, but I'm originally a southerner, grew up just outside of London, near Windsor, and studied down south, lived and travelled a fair bit, worked in the south of France, and then came up to Newcastle, following my sister who was a doctor up here. And the whole family's sort of just decamped to the North East. About 14, 15 years ago, we moved to Pontealand. And yeah, did the Dyrus Wall thing of building for ourselves as well. And I've got three kids, 20, 18, 16 now, which is one of the reasons I've got involved, because somehow they don't want to know me anymore. So I do have a bit of time on my hands. But I'm not currently working in architecture, my husband still is, and you'll probably all know the business he runs around here. I moved into supporting the local schools on the campaigns a few years back, supporting Pontealand Middle School, now that Pontealand Community Planery, to keep that open. That got me interested in the world beyond architecture, if you like. I helped to set up North East Futures UTC, which is a university technical college in the centre of Newcastle, specialising in health tech and digital. And that got me interested in health tech. So then I was looking, for a couple of years, I worked to develop the health and social care tech cluster across the North East. And so that was really interesting, working with businesses, sort of large and small, and working with the NHS trusts across here in North Cumbria and local authority social services, looking at the challenges they're facing in digital transformation and equity and digital access, all the problems that they're facing. And I'm currently working on a very different project called Northumberland County Council with the Royal Design Centre. And we're actually working with farmers, looking at the problems they're facing, which is a really interesting time to be doing that, looking at sort of building business resilience, working towards sort of climate change and net zero targets, and how do you actually deal with that with agriculture? So had a few interesting words with Richard over the last year or so on that topic as well. So yeah, so it's been really interesting. So I'm quite interdisciplinary, you could say, interested in everything from the environment to planning to help. And yeah, hopefully can give a bit of time, but I'm one of those, if you ask, a busy person, you know, give me more to do, juggling all the time.
Oh, so yes, my background is in the legal sector, high education sector. So I grew up in Newcastle and then went to university to study law. Really liked the side of law where you were helping people rather than just sitting in an office all day. So I ended up being a lecturer at St Mirren University for five years. So I used to specialise in solicitation, commercial contracts and clinical legal education, which was teaching people how to be solicitors and go out into the world and support clients. And a big part of that job that I loved was I managed the law clinic there. So those who couldn't afford legal advice would come to us from around the region, and I would help them get the support that they needed. And then I wanted to do that on a bigger scale, so I ended up working for the National Solicitor for Bono charity and basically supported over 50 clinics in the north of England, how to grow, how to get more volunteers involved, or it might be, there was an area in Newcastle where they really needed support with housing and help the services get set up there. Following that, I very much realised that the North East wasn't really getting represented as much as we would like or need in terms of pro bono. So I helped set up the North East Pro Bono Committee, which brought together judiciary, universities, charities, solicitors and barristers. And I currently co-chair that, and my big project at the moment is pro bono, because there's lots of little communities in Northumberland where we don't have a lot of legal support. So I'm trying to work on getting some services out built there. Alongside that, I also represent the region at national level on the Attorney General's Pro Bono Committee, which is our region gets the attention and support needs. I became councillor just over a year ago. I moved to Pontealand with my partner and my dog four years ago. Really love the community, love the environment and wanted to make sure that we maintained that, thought I could use some of my advocacy work and my work supporting communities by being a town councillor and that's how I've been self-helping and enjoyed it ever since.
Sure. I've lived in Pontealand since I was six, now 31, someone who's better at maths can work that out. My family have been in around the area since the 70s. My grandad was a newspaper man, he ran the Journal, the Chronicle and the Sunday Sun as their MD for a number of years. He's my biggest inspiration. My family grew up down from Aberdeen, he's a sort of rags to riches type sort of, he remains my biggest inspiration personally. Professionally, I've worked for MPs in Westminster and in their constituency, I first, most recently with Guy O'Komen, the former MP for this area. Some of my proudest achievements on that were helping on the political side of the Green Belt Campaign in 2015 to 2017, but also more recently, the leader on his response to Storm Arwen, which obviously particularly devastated Pontealand and Pontealand North, my ward in particular. Nowadays, I work with some of Britain's biggest companies, advising them on how to spread social mobility and create opportunity for people across the UK. It's a privilege of the life to be a Pontealand Town councillor. I'm looking forward to contributing to the community over the next four years.
I live here, since 1988, I started small business in a plain state in Pontealand. My life started from there, I lived with my mum and dad at that time. And then 1991, I got married and then I've got four children, all living in Pontealand, we're a joint family. And our businesses is like catering and construction industries, who are helping to do things in our businesses. We're very happy in Pontealand. I've been working with Pontealand community last eight years in the Pontealand Town Council. What made me to come in Pontealand Town Council? Since I started Pontealand, my businesses and I got lots of things this community, and I thought I'm going to give something back to the community. So only platform is if I start working in here. And I'm trying to do my best to help in this community. So that's my story, not a big story like you guys. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sophia Queen. That was fascinating. But it's just from Christine, and we'll start the heads of each other better, but a very good little overview there. We've gone through this question of mayor, the next item on the agenda is the election of deputy mayor. We're all of us aware, Sue Johnson isn't able to be here this evening. Apologies, I'm sure we had it officially in a moment. But what Sue has done is said that she's prepared to put herself forward for the position of deputy mayor. And what I'm doing now is calling for nominations for the position of deputy mayor. Yes, Richard?
I propose Sue Johnson.
I would second her.
And you're second, Christine?
Well, she has been a councillor, this has been 13 years, the same as me, because we started together.
So lucky.
So it's my lucky number, actually, Richard. So to me, she's the obvious candidate.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for the position of deputy mayor? Okay, we need to take a vote based on Richard's proposal and Christine's seconding. Well, for Sue Johnson, deputy mayor. You're unanimous, I think. Okay. Thanks for that. Apologies for absence, Karen.
Yeah, Sue Johnson.
Early on, it is. What we've got next is a declaration of interest. I know you've all been through the paperwork on this, and as these things arise, for anyone that's new around the table this evening, the issues where you need to declare will become very obvious. An example of it to illustrate what I'm seeing is I'm a member of Rugby Club Pontealand. If the Rugby Club are applying to the council for anything, I need to declare my interest and observe whatever rules we apply to that discussion. So are there any declarations of interest for the meeting this evening?
I will not take part in any planning issues from this council, because I will sit on a different council, further from the county council.
Okay. You're sitting out on all panel matters. Yep, understand, Richard. Yep. Okay, you're sitting out on all panel matters. Yep, understand, Richard. Yep. Any others?
I'll do the same. I'll do the same.
You'll do the same?
Yeah.
At, at the moment, we are all on a planning committee.
Yeah.
There may be changes, so I might not be on plan.
Okay, we'll come back to the question of planning committee, but I understand the two of you are, are stepping away from it for the reasons you're saying. Yeah? What we've next got is, um, uh, the minutes of the council meeting is for both the twelfth of March and the ninth of April. We took into the twelfth of March first. And there was, um, um, a disagreement at the, um, April meeting in trying to agree these minutes for, um, the twelfth of March. Um, the issue that was causing concern was, um, uh, item one three three on these minutes that I think should be in your pack for the twelfth of March. What should also be in front of you is, um, condensing this paragraph one three three into, um, some very simple wording. Just simply, um, to say, um, that there was some discussion on this issue, trying to summarise a debate that's, uh, more detailed than the, the old original one three three item. And then, uh, to follow on, on the end of it all, say, council hall requested the recording of meetings as an agenda item at the April meeting. Are people all right with those suggested amendments?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Um, that being said, um, we then need to approve these minutes for the twelfth of March meeting. But the meeting had to approve it, I think, um, a lot of the, um, minutes were, were gone through page by page. Do you want to do that again, Cath?
Um, yes, I do.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So what we've got to do with it, with this, is just go through page by page to make sure people approve. So I'm looking at page one of the minutes of the meeting of twelfth of March. Everyone happy with page one as amended?
Absolutely.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Um, um, page two, which I think starts at one three four, uh, planning?
Yeah.
Okay. Next page starts one three five, notes of motion.
Yeah.
Here with that. Next page is, uh, one three six, the Thunderdome spaces settlement at the top of the page. People happy with that?
Yeah.
Next page beginning one three seven, tree work in Ponte and Park. Here with that.
Yeah.
And the final page with the mayor's report at the top of the page, page six. Everyone happy with that?
Yes.
Okay. We'll make sure Cath and I, those minutes are properly signed and then to enter the record. We then come to, um, minutes of the meeting of the council held on the ninth of April. And, um, the draft minutes are in front of us all this evening, part of the pack that we received to, in lead up to today's meeting. Um, we're going to go through page by page, but if there's anything in particular that people are wanting to raise before we, um, finally begin to approve these set of minutes. Okay, so we're looking at page one of the ninth of April meeting and people are happy with the, um, notes of that meeting? Yes? Next page starting one four nine, grant applications. Uh, people happy with the record of the meeting for page two, yes? Next one, who starts one four nine, grant applications, page three of these minutes, people happy with that?
Yeah.
And lastly, um, starting with one fifty, video recording, page four of these minutes, people happy with that?
Yes.
So again, I'll ensure that Cath and I, um, make, um, sure that these records are signed up and properly entered. Yes, Will?
I have a question about the recording issue. Is this the appropriate time to erase it or should I be going through a different procedure?
Um, well, it certainly is arising from these minutes because it was, it was discussed with them, right?
Yeah.
So I'll continue, yeah? I, I was most intrigued by this question as a newcomer and there's clearly an, an issue going on here. Uh, I was so intrigued, I thought I would quite like to see the recording of, uh, the meetings. But I, I, I found I was unable to do so. I'm told it's only available on a Facebook group, a Facebook group to do with one of the schools. Would it not be, um, fair and appropriate that the other councillors can see what is going on in the Facebook page that you, you post?
It would be, it would be fair and appropriate. Do you want to come in?
Yeah, yeah, I can. It, it's, it's not to do with the schools. I mean, there is, there is a Facebook page which they're uploaded to, which is facebook.com/pontelandtowncouncilrecordings. They are available on YouTube as well though, which is, uh, youtube.com forward slash at Ponte and Town Council Recordings. And you, you, you can see them all there.
Can that be written down so we can find it again?
Because, I mean, I don't know whether you want to send the links, I can send them.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll send them around, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the first time it happened, Kevin sent the links to me, I sent them to everybody, so it's good looking. We definitely can see it on YouTube.
There's new councillors obviously as well, I'll send.
Sufi and whoever you want to do.
Thank you. Um, anyone knows me, I'm not very good with technology, but I have been on YouTube and I have looked at some of these council, uh, uh, discussions. So it's, it, it, it's not difficult, we will do that link for them.
If, if I forget, just send me an email or a WhatsApp or something, I'll be there.
Christine's got a.
Yes, Christine?
Just remember, just, eh, um, to give you an update, I have to say, um, the Easter tree was an absolute roaring success. So thanks very much for your donation towards that because I've still got one prize to be collected. But other than that, it was, I've never seen as many people in Merton Hall for teas and coffees and all of the children came out of the park laughing and smiling. But having said that, it was a lovely day. And I think when the sun shines, everything's better, isn't it? But it was a huge success, so I just want to thank you on behalf of Merton Hall for the eighty grand grant you gave us. We spent it wisely.
Uh, what was very clear from when we went round the room a few minutes ago, there's an awful lot of, um, um, deep seated and strong positive views about Ponte and. And amongst the things that we try to do, all the official stuff that we were coming to know, there is this community stuff. And that's a good illustration that Christine's going back to and, uh, I was helping out with that event and it's just lovely to see the families involved in it. Your children, the mum and dad and grandma and grandad, it's a really lovely community event.
It was.
Yes.
And thank you, you must thank the Rotary for putting all the signs up. Nobody could take part in an efficient capacity as a councillor, so we were all there as independent people. And we'll have to do with the council at all because we're in that space.
Okay, and the answer was rising, can't it?
No.
No? Okay, next we've come to item seven, appointment of the accounts committee. Where we are as we speak this evening, there are five councillors that are, um, authorised through Lloyds Bank, the bank that the council uses, to authorise, uh, payments. And what it takes is two of us each month, one councillor to come in and authorise the payments and the second one to counter sign, almost like a, an audit, uh, function. So there are five councillors that can get us through the immediate, uh, uh, situation. Um, I think people have indicated to Cath their willingness to join the accounts committee. What we've got to do is go through a process to get Lloyds Bank to approve it. It's always so machinery to go through, a lot of bureaucracy there. But we'll work on it with you and get to the stage where it becomes much easier for us to just call upon them and challenge them to do it. It's normally around the, you know, twenty-third of, of, of the month that we do it. It's extremely well organised by the staff in here, just come and everything's presented to you to, to check and do, uh, the, the role that's required. Um, it's mainly Bev that leads on this and I'm sure she'll help any of you that are coming to it for the first time once you're, you're, you're duly authorised. So, um, we'll make sure that's, um, put in train to get as many accounts on to that, uh, accounts committee. The next thing we have is item eight, appointment of representatives on local organisations. And, um, scheduled in the paper, I think, in the papers, um, it gives the, the background on this. If we can just go through it, uh, uh, starting with the Merton Hall Recreation Centre trustees. And you wanted to come in on this, Christine, but we have yourself, um, Sophie and Nermal named as the, as the trustees for Merton Hall.
No, not me. I don't, I don't represent.
Not, not P T, sorry.
I don't represent Merton Hall as councillor because I run it. So I'm, I'm not a councillor. The two council representatives for a number of years now have been Sophia and Nermal.
Right.
And Nermal does put activities on in Merton Hall, so, um, she's, it's, to me, I would leave it just the same if the water still stopped.
Well, that, that would, that, that's fine.
Yeah.
Because I'm a trustee anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Represent the council.
Okay, if we move on from that, then the next thing is Ponte and Memorial Hall Committee. And, uh, until about, um, uh, eighteen months ago, um, I, I was on the Memorial Hall Committee, uh, as a representative for the council. We don't have to fill this, uh, particular slot. There is a long history there, uh, between the town council and the memorial hall. It's regarded by the council generally as a very important part of the, um, facilities that we have in, uh, in Ponte and. Um, if someone wanted to step forward for that, I think John Harrison is current Chair of the trustees at the hall. We need to have a dialogue with him. Um, and if you want to go away from this meeting this evening and have a think about it and try and buy some more about it, you're very welcome to. Uh, but there's no requirement upon us to fill that role and as the papers suggest, there's no one fulfilling that role, um, currently. Next one we have is the Newcastle Airport Consultative Committee. And here we have, uh, one vacancy, uh, with an expression of interest from, um, four councillors. Um, the four councillors are, um, Miss Altar Minor, um, you Rosie, um, Michaela, um, um, and, um, myself as, as councillor. There is only the one vacancy, uh, and, um, open to, uh, discussion on this. Um, Richard already sits on the, um, um, Consultative Committee as a county councillor. Uh, and it was, um, Lyle, um, was here this evening, used to accompany, uh, Richard on that. I would say a couple of things about it. The first is that, uh, I've tried successfully when we've considered this Consultative Committee before today as a council, if I could perhaps go forward on, onto that and, uh, in a way I'd explain the two roles fulfilled by the two councillors I've just mentioned. I would also say that in trying to look at where, where we go from here, I don't know if it would make a difference if there had, uh, a person on there as mayor, not particularly meaning me, if the mayor was on, on, on that, uh, role rather than, uh, a fellow councillor. But I'm open to a discussion on it. We have the one slot and three people, three, four of us wishing to step forward.
Um, well, obviously I'd put myself forward for it. I'd be really keen to be on that, um, airport committee because it is largely the residents in high who understand me complaining about the issue around Wencesbury. And I'll work very closely with Lyle, who's already trying to put steps in place to mitigate that issue. And I think, you know, um, it is a major issue and I'd really want to voice my residents' views on that. And obviously work with yourself, Alan, as Chair of Highways and to, uh, Richard, the county councillors. But it's something I feel really passionate about because, you know, I think it is the key issue for my residents at the moment.
I really have this in your word.
I'm happy to be stuck off if you've got too many.
Right, you've gone, you're off.
I thought you were going to say that, yeah.
Oh, I think you guys have a much stronger, it's better for the citizens there.
Yeah, um, what do we do? We're going to, uh, draw, draw lots or something then?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think we're both keen to be honest. I, I, I would say it rightly is, uh, in your word, the way you described, but it's also a Ponte and wide, uh, issue, it isn't just simply that.
Can I make a suggestion? Would it have to be a named person? Could you not take turns?
It has to be a named person.
Yeah.
Can I explain a little bit about what it does? It, there is an airport committee, which is the leader of, leaders of all the councils, the seven local councils. And that, we've got nothing to do with this. This is from all the local councils around and about, including Durham, including, you know, that, that sort of views the airport, but also have the airport space and the city, Wozington, Wozington, you know, um, Newcastle. It's, it's, it's about trying to liaise with people. The, the big problem is the airport. Because they keep on filling with the, the car parks and putting prices up and, you know, I, I, I try my best. And when I was appointed to the, uh, Northumberland County Council, trying to react to the red roof that's there, that's, that's caused all the problems. But it's also about noise. And there's sometimes seven hundred complaints a month from three people. So it's, it's, it's a lot of things, but there's, it, it is interesting. Uh, Alan Barney, Christine Keesley, Lyle, you know, but, you know, it is interesting and it's in our interest. But at the moment, the highway is, is the, the real problem.
Let's go.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think Rosie would be a good shout for it. That's not to say that you also wouldn't be good at it. But I, but I think the fact that you are mayor and obviously very keenly engaged in this issue means that in a hypothetical world, much Rosie got on this committee, um, she would report to you and, and you and her both could sort of with the extra, the extra weight, if you see what I mean. Rosie's legal background and you can sort of bring the political heft of the office of mayor and Ponte and Town Council to, to force her. And I wonder if maybe that way we sort of get like a two for one out of it, rather than if the mayor was the person on it, already hitting your game.
I think we just draw lots. We're both keen. Rosie's got the equal rights on us, so we do, we do that, Cath.
I've got my pieces of paper here. So one point I did have is whether or not whoever's on the highways, well, the airport community should potentially be on highways as well if there's so much overlap or not, or it's not really.
Different, different, different things.
Different.
Yeah, I always do with a lot of matters, uh.
I, I mean, the, the, the park and this, that park town is a real problem. In fact, it's all Ponte and.
Yeah.
There's reported all.
If you put the two names in.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah? Yeah, sorry, you consider all the little pieces of paper.
I've got lots. Don't I? She put these two names, who wants, don't do no pecking. The responsibility.
It's come up, uh, myself. Um, and these positions come up, um, annually, so, um, we've got a, a result, uh, for, for this next year. Let's just see how we go onwards. But I do acknowledge I can't be very keenly interested in the way you've obviously behaved with me about it. I'd equally try and keep you in the right. I know how difficult this red roof issue, issue is around, press for the balance.
Yeah, it would be good if we can have on the next highways committee or special meeting about this.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, the next two positions on here are, are usually the, the mayor to be appointed and I expect to, to step into, into those roles, um, this, the now. Um, um, the Association of Local Councils and the County Council Parish liaison group. I gather from Karen, um, I've attended these, the riveting, uh, meetings that you, you, uh, attend with these. But I'll, I'll make sure I report anything back that's, uh, relevant to this, uh, wider council meeting. The next thing we have is Point News and, Point Pump News and Views editorial group. And, um, uh, I currently sit on that editorial group. We've got two vacancies. We've got four people that are interested in stepping forward. The four that indicate an interest are, um, yourself, Christine, um, yourself, Dan, uh, Nermal, who first, uh, indicated an interest, uh, and Kevin Newhart. So we've got, uh, two vacancies on that editorial group, four people that are wanting to, to join that editorial group.
I'll take my name down and finger up Dan because he's new, new people need to be on some committees. So I am on various others, so I'll take my name out. I wanted to, but I can wait another day or something.
Okay, yeah?
Are you saying there's two vacancies other than councillor Alan Hall?
Yes.
All right, okay.
So we're in a situation of two vacancies and three people wanting to put themselves forward.
We have a vote. On both. We are a democratic.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't think drawing lots is, is a great way of doing it, to be, to be honest, because we've all got skills. And I mean, Dan's background in marketing makes him a clear contender. I, I, I would suggest for this and it'd be a bit unfair for me and Christine to, to, you know, win on a straw poll when actually Dan might have more to contribute, so.
Yeah.
Well, are we, are we saying what way forward is for Dan to be one of the two and, and the, yourself, Christine and, uh, and Kevin, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the way forward, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we vote on Dan? So just so you've got it officially on.
Officially, yes.
Just put our hand on.
For those in favour of Dan being.
Dan.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, how do you want to go forward from here with Kevin and Christine?
I think they should just vote on it, just like I'll go down. If people want Kevin instead of me, that's fine.
It's a secret ballot if you want.
Yeah. No, just.
I don't think we actually can do a secret, but I remember these, it's only for mayor and deputy mayor.
Tell me maybe here a little bit about what skills you'd bring to the committee.
Yeah. With an idea. You start, Kevin.
Okay. Okay. Well, some of the work that I do in my professional life is producer, is producing a magazine. It's somewhat different from the Point News and Views, but it does have a community angle. You know, historically over my career, which I accept as, and obviously Christine's obviously will be, but a lot of that has involved writing, copy. I'm very interested in the Point News and Views. I've been an assiduous reader of it since its first ever edition, I would suggest. I do think I've got a lot to bring to the committee in terms of experience producing a magazine, in terms of ideas and how to take it forward, which I've already sort of discussed in brief with Pat previously. And it's a committee that I would really, really enjoy the opportunity to be on, but I've been on it thus far, so yeah.
The only thing concerns me about that, Kevin, is you're saying you've got ideas on how to change it. It works and it works very well because Chris, who's sitting up there, I don't know if you all know Chris, but he is the editor of Point News and Views. He searched, he researches all the advertising and things like that. So you won't know this, but when Chris first started producing Point News and Views, he actually never got paid at all for a number of years because we literally had no money. And I became the treasurer. And because I'm quite forceful, I like, I have to say, we did have ended up with some money, which has allowed us to pay for Chris. And I'm interested in running, in being on the committee because, yes, you can bring some ideas forward, that might be good for change. But I wouldn't like to see Point News and Views change too much because we've always worked on the principle that Chris can. Chris, what's the percentage again for editorial to advertising? Is it 70/30 or something like that?
Fifty. Fifty.
Fifty. So we've always worked, so we keep a happy medium and that's one of the reasons I wanted to be on the committee.
Can I just say, I'm not talking about wholesale change of the magazine, Christine, and the other councillors. That publication works well, it's a great publication, it's well read. You know, I was thinking about suggesting some ideas in terms of, wouldn't it be great if the sum up of the town council's activities were included again because they've fallen off in recent years? Or maybe having a column from the mayor or from the president of this school, the faces of the young person's school, et cetera. You know, the magazine works well, I just think it would be an interesting thing for someone with my background to do.
Is it impossible for Chris to be asked to comment on this?
I think you might put him in an invidious position.
Only me, which is good.
Yeah, I think it's better if we try to decide. The next stage, having heard from the two who would like to be considered for this slot, is, are both of you happy with an open vote or do you want to go to some?
No, I'm happy with an open vote.
Right.
I don't mind one way or the other.
Well, in which case then, if we go ladies first, can I ask people that would support Christine's candidacy as a fellow vacancy on the editorial group, Point News?
Christine.
Yeah. And those that would support Kevin's candidacy for this vacancy? I think it's over to you, Christine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Are you going to?
I am just going to come to those, yeah.
Is that a recorded vote?
Sorry.
Is that a recorded vote?
No. No, just to come.
Don't.
Oh, wait, okay. Do you want that?
No.
Obviously counted up and isn't that up to eleven?
Also, as you'll see on the schedule, is that there are appointees from residents within Pontieland. Some of you may know John Hewitt and Carl Lawley, they're both quite high-profile figures in Pontieland. They sit on there as part of the editorial group. There are two vacancies, as it says in the paper. We've got a situation where Karen was on the editorial board and the other person, Karen and our mayor that's just stood down, the other person was Katrina Woodrow. So they were both as councillors on there. They both actually are now qualifying as residents and they both contribute quite a lot to the work of the editorial group. So I'm asking the meeting if you are comfortable with the idea of Karen, making it know better as Karen Overbury, Karen Overbury or Karen Allen, to carry on as one of the resident slots on the editorial board? And similarly, Katrina Woodrow.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Is it possible for a town councillor to sit on it as a resident?
Sorry.
Theoretically, I'm a resident of Pontieland, could I go on it in that capacity?
I'll have to look into it.
I think it was brought about so that you had less councillors and you had equal members.
No, it's supposed to be four residents and three councillors. That's what it is.
Yeah.
I don't know whether it could be looked at, Kevin.
It would make it very complicated, Kevin, with you also sitting as a councillor.
Yeah.
I don't think it would make it that complicated. I mean, if it's easier for Karen and Katrina to continue, then I'll go for that, but.
Okay.
It's just because I'm passionate about it.
Can you leave it with me and I'll?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and I think that completes the agenda item eight then. It took some time to go through, but I think we're there on that one. But then now to the various committees.
Can I just make the comments on the committees before we start? That everybody got what they wanted. I think so, the cemetery, sorry, the staffing committee, which is all that subscribed within the terms of reference, there's always supposed to be four members on there. So I just wanted to make that point, everybody got the preferences that they wanted. But a little bit light in some areas, so that I could be coming back to you in the future.
So just to be clear, has everyone got this updated agenda item number?
That's what I'm being handed out.
Yeah. So you can see from there, in line with what Cass just been saying, that those people that stood for environment or planning or whatever have been slotted into those roles. One of the most difficult issues for the council is that the planning committee meets every two weeks. And Bev Wells is our member staff that deals mainly with those planning committee meetings. It can become a battle royal trying to get the quorum of three to be at these planning meetings. So you'll find Nermal and Will, you'll be called upon often to try and see if you could be there.
I was going to suggest further down the line, once I was on the committee, could some of the meetings not be done by Zoom or Teams rather than sitting around the table and tying up the whole morning?
I think we have to be here in person, by standing in it.
The quorum is three.
The quorum's three and we can't have remotely, unless it's a.
But we could send a comment in by email if you're having a meeting.
No, because it's a committee and it's open to the public.
Right.
It has to be advertised and the public will attend. And if you're just doing it by email, it's just not legal.
If I continue my question, I'm still working for time. If I can't make a Tuesday morning and I particularly want to comment on a planning application that a resident in my board has brought to my attention, for example.
You talked an email to Bev as the secretary of.
Well, that's what I'm saying, can I email? That's all I asked.
No, I thought you said you wanted to do it by email when you were in my office the other day. I thought you said, you know, you want to do it all by emails.
No, no, I said, could we have a Zoom or a Teams meeting? And then my second question is, if I can't attend, can I send my comments by email?
Are you clear, Will?
Yes, thank you.
So we're coming to the other committees that are over the page. But on this first page, then, we've got these four main bodies, the accounts, planning, highways, environment. And coming back to highways, because not least, we were talking about earlier with you and I touching it, Rosie, there is a real issue, a very serious issue around the question of the red routes and the debate about parking for residents on Pontieland that live close to where that red route has been put down. So what I'm saying is that Pat will get in touch with people that are on this highways committee detailed in here, looking for an early meeting about when we can try to meet. And I think, Richard, you're also working on this at NCC level.
Yeah, it was all halted for the election. We were just about to have a meeting at the airport. So it's been a bit of activity here. We were promised to report this morning and won't be completely here, it's not arrived yet, if it does. So we urgently need, because it's a process. You know, to put yellow lines down is a tedious process. This is red lines, which probably makes it even more tedious. Everyone thinks, you get a tin of paint and go around, it's not. You have to advertise in the press, you have to consult, it's a long process. And, you know, we are really trying hard to get a reaction around the honeypot thing. We see it, everybody sees it, next to the Big and B, you know, down next to the cemetery, all that, certain things. The new psycho route, you know, we need to really get into this to get it done. We just need, you know, councils never work very fast. I know it took Newcastle about a year and a half to get theirs. And the cameras only came live in February, I think, which is why there's all the activity away from those routes. But we have to, we have to put it in place and it will not be cheap, but we have to do it.
So you realise it's a hot topic, I'll come back to you. It's a hot topic, we'll try and get an early highways meeting. I think all of us around the table are going to be impacted by this to a greater or lesser extent because there are often very upset residents that whilst on camera, I'm not going into any detail about it, but some of these residents are having to put up with horrific behaviour, not just bad parking, but a lot worse than that. And therefore, one of our major concerns as a town council, and we will be setting for an early meeting. Yes, Will?
Rosie and I had an informal chat about this before the meeting. I'm just wondering if it's considered bollards with the town council? You need their consent to provide them that the council could pay, this council could pay, wasn't that a lead? We had a problem on North Road a few months ago, probably, where there was a lot of vans parking in a certain area. I asked about bollards and I was told it's horrendously expensive. I don't know why, but that's what came back. And we're having the same sort of, you know, where that fellow was killed, the round, the blackbird, not the blackbird, the roundabout with the Range Rover, it's been to court. Because someone lobbying that either raised the curb or put bollards. So it's another sort of, it's not straightforward, it's what else is under the pavement, what you can actually, or the grass. But I think we would look at anything, but the real way to do it is the camera with a red line. Yeah, because they get fined and they don't, they don't like getting fined. But I thought that was the route you'd gone down that was going nowhere and was going to take. No, we're going to get, we're going to get there. Right. See, as a moment, we don't know, we don't know who's the administration at County Hall. We don't know who's head of highways and all of that. So there's a little bit of time to go, you know, and send emails, a small reminding them that we have a meeting that was going to be done just before the election process, which would have been stopped anyway. But we've got to get on with this because it is dreadful, we've seen it.
Okay. Sorry, Kevin, we're interwoven.
That's, I was, yeah, I wasn't going to say anything because we need to move on.
Okay, right. So we say with these working parties and committees, again, you know, with past events that stepped in, the cemetery committee has, the footpath users group has. Where we are with the staffing committee is that this committee, we set up some time ago as an ad hoc grouping. It was created because we had a particular issue we were trying to deal with on staff matters at the time. It operates on very confidential and sensitive information. As we speak this evening, I'm not aware, and Cath has been briefing me on this, we're not now that we're aware of any immediate issues whereby the staffing committee would need to meet. And I'm suggesting to the meeting this evening that whilst Sue Johnson and I may be on the staffing committee as a rollover situation historically, that we don't try to appoint others to staffing committee at this council meeting, not least because we've got the same or similar issues to what we've had already this evening, where there are only four members able to be on this staffing committee. So I'm just suggesting we leave it in advance, there will be a need at some stage, I'm sure, for the staffing committee to meet. And last thing, we don't try to go any further beyond the seat, will we?
Okay, yeah. Can I just ask a question, Cath? If somebody wanted to change their mind and be added to a committee, can they do that now? I'm not asking for myself, actually, Rosie, I was thinking about you. Because I was thinking about how you didn't get on the airport and I just wondered if you wished you'd have gone on to highways, where you would have a little bit more knowledge of what's going on.
The only reason I didn't put myself forward for that is because I was told there was a lot of members on it in the past.
There was, but there hasn't been this time with the takeover, hasn't been this time. So there's six people on there, there were seven, so do you want to go on?
Yeah, I'll go on, I respect.
Sorry, I mean, I must tell you what to do.
No, no, it's.
I just thought you're so passionate and so maligned about them people of there that got an awful name.
Okay, good. Moving on then to agenda item ten. What we have in front of us are the planning committee meeting of the first of April and the 15th of April. The paper has been put out by Cath to be able to pre-read these notes of these two meetings. Sue as Chair is not here this evening, as we're aware. I was in present at both meetings and if something anybody wants to raise about what was discussed at these two planning meetings, if we do raise it.
I've just got information, you can't be changed.
Okay. Right, moving on then, we've got a schedule that Cath prepared showing the calendar of meetings. And I think, whether or not you're going to try and perhaps slot some more dates in, is that the plan, Cath?
Yes, I mean, I think they just, the working parties in particular need to be set up and I can talk to the chairs and try and get some final statements in there.
It's always a problem about people's availability. We were in something earlier about the attending planning meetings. What we'll try to do is sub mapping so that at least if people are aware in advance of when the dates are, it might make it a bit easier to juggle the diary. But otherwise, please make a note of the town council meetings and others such as you're affected by, the various committees that you sit on. Okay, next thing we have is the events working party, agenda item twelve. This is notes of a meeting that we had on the 2nd of April, touching on, as you can see, BE Day, trying to do something to recognise the Pontieland Bridge being 100 years old. We always use it almost on a daily basis, but they won't let us do anything to mark that 100 year anniversary. Touching on what was a very successful dog event that was held last year and is planned to be held again this year. If it's of any interest to you, if you happen to be a dog owner or if you'd like to help with that, it's one of these situations where any help is very much appreciated. It was Lyle's original idea to have this event. It really has gone down well with residents. It's another community-led event to illustrate the sort of work that we do outside the main role of our position as a town council. If you want to try and get involved in that and have a look at the dates and let Cath know, let me know. Touching on the other two things, remember staying the grant from the airport. Is this just a report item, Cath? Does it need to approve it?
No, just a recommendation.
No, no, no.
I just wanted to ask, I think we made some money available for care homes to purchase stuff to sell to town and fund REBE Day Haiti. Do we know if that was taken up?
Yeah.
Who wants to?
Yeah, I don't think everyone took it in, but Royal Hampton, the one at the top of North Road, I can't remember.
Yeah, it is Grangely or something.
Yeah, and.
Few of us in the accounts.
Oh, very good, yeah. Pontieland Mall, I think, I can't remember.
And I actually took it up, Kevin, on behalf of, no, no. Because we did the Easter train and then the secretary went on holiday and then I was busy with all the election stuff and thinking, we didn't get round to organise it. So I've arranged to return the money to the council. But it's the first time we've ever had a grant where we couldn't, but I'm sorry, it's me and it's left to me and the secretary and it's a lot of organising, the food, the entertainment. it's a lot of organising, the food, the entertainment and all that. So she went on and we told her as well and we decided we could only hold it this Saturday and we felt that was inappropriate because it had lost its thingy. So just to let you know, the money will be returned. Bev sent me the bank details on return it.
Yeah, Christine, could the money be used maybe, I'm getting ahead of myself here, but for someone, BJ Day instead?
For which?
For BJ Day instead.
What day is that? Wednesday?
August.
August, yeah.
Quite possibly, but I would, if I returned it, I could always apply again when it comes to August. And it just depends how many. Everybody who takes part in Merton Hall, nobody gets paid.
Yeah.
And at the minute, without a caretaker and the secretary's doing her bit on a Thursday night, we're trying to clean it and it's, it's just a lot.
Sorry, it wasn't any more work.
No, no, but we're definitely.
We have an eighty, eighty of anniversary for that as well.
Nobody will always have a big show.
Yeah.
Just, just on that, I'm sorry. Just on that, I'm not trying to go back to that. We did all the, we needed to, to mark VE Day and I, I think that was a really successful event. I'm very interested, not this evening, but after this evening, the next meeting or whenever, about what do we do with VE Day? Because it's, VE Day was such a big thing for Europe. BJ Day was obviously very important marking the end of the Second World War. But interested in views, not now, but at some later stage. So that's those events, the minutes of the events working party dealt with. We've come to thirteen, we've got the county council report. Anything to report?
We are in, I mean, there's Lyle here as well and I've just gone. Has she gone, has she?
Yes, she has.
We are, you know, the result, we took it a hit, but we didn't take the hit that came down Durham and other places. So at this moment in time, we've discussed the red route wrong with that. I've got very little to report because, one, we don't know who will take control of the county council. So at this moment, until next Wednesday, if any deals are done, and I don't want to come up on anything about it because it, it's not in my hands, but it, it'll be what it'll be.
Normally, if you've reported something, ask if people want to ask questions. But I mean, you're really constrained in the way that you've said, Richard, so I think that's, unless you have anything to add.
Just to add that I am on top of the red route as well in terms of dealing with emails and calls. I get daily emails and calls from residents about that as well. And to mention well, bollards, I have looked at that as well, and just for reasons that Richard Dodd mentioned. It's not as straightforward as what we might think, but we are, a lot of people are on top of the, trying to get us ahead of the game. Just trying to storm that red roof.
Right. Okay, that's on that then, Richard and Lyle. There is no mayor's report for perhaps obviously everyone around the table. And I don't think there are any reports about town council events or local organisation. So we're into the council articulation, which is there for everyone to see. Dan's already been delving into it there. This document, I know one hundred and sixteen, is the document that you presented with by Berkeley to do the check authorisation, shows all the transactions and the markings on the page are showing you that the documents have been duly processed. If there are any questions on it, I'm sure Kath could do with it if anyone saw anything on the accounts. No?
No.
Okay, that being the case, you've survived the first meeting. Well done, everyone. And I'll afford to read you again next month. Thank you very much.